Hello.
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Chris Miller, here.
All right, so tonight, first up, we're going to be honoring some retirees with a lot of combined years of service. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Neznik for further presentation.
Okay, so yesterday, we had our end of the year ceremony with the staff, and we honored our retirees. But a little bit ago, Bill and I talked about getting some of the retirees to come back and to be honored at the board level. And I think we were looking somewhere like in March timeframe, and then it got to April, and you know, there were different people holding out or just seeing, you know, what it looked like. So each time, it got pushed back. So today, we welcome our retirees here. We do have three in attendance tonight. One of them has been retired for nine months, I believe, right? And so we're, she retired back in the end of August, beginning of September.
September 1st was my first day.
So we will start off with Rita Boor. So Rita, if you could stand up. And Rita started her journey at Topahocken back in April of 1989. And at that time, she was hired on the board agenda for $4.85 as an aide.
That was good.
But Rita is, and I shared with the staff yesterday, Rita, for me, has been one of the, she's one of the sweetest, nicest people you'll ever meet. She's been a huge inspiration for me. And whenever I had a bad day, and I would open up my email, there was always an email that would pop up in some fashion or form from Rita with some words of encouragement. And so I always appreciated that from her. As far as the position she's held, she's been an aide, she's been a life skills paraprofessional, she was a student assigned paraprofessional working as a one-to-one, she was a job coach for seven years, and then most recently, post-COVID, was a learning support paraprofessional. She's done the circuit, she's been at Bethel, she's been at the junior, senior high school, and she has been at Penburneville. And kind of came full circle. Back in 89, she started at Penburneville and ended her career at Penburneville. So 33 years of service. So congratulations, Rita.
Could I ask Matt Hetrick a question?
Sure.
Do you remember your first grade teacher? Do you remember the aide that was in the classroom when you were in first grade? Because I have a picture here of her that you drew. Now, I was Misses Drews at the time, but if you look at this, maybe you remember because I look just like that.
Long, swirly hair.
Jersey hair and the big glasses.
Why are you incredibly red?
Single hour.
I gotta look through the rest of this retirement list.
So congratulations, Rita.
Thank you.
The next is Ruth Laflant. Ruth started her journey here at Topahocken on September, she was officially hired by the board on September 21st, 2004, as a part-time support paraprofessional. She has served the district over 18 years of service, and again, has served in multiple roles. She started out as an instructional aide for a kindergarten student, but was kind of a glutton for punishment. And also, I learned that she was subbing at the same time in the cafeteria in a playground. So as if being in a kindergarten classroom wasn't enough, going out of recess certainly fulfilled it. And then from there, a Title I paraprofessional, math intervention paraprofessional, and then most recently, she ended her career this year as a life skills paraprofessional. And certainly, those 18 years of service have been filled with nothing but the best service that we could ever ask for from Ruth, and she's done a tremendous job for us. So on behalf of the district, thank you so much, and congratulations. And then Glenna Pyle. So do you want to stand up, Glenna? So Glenna has served us 17 years in the district. Glenna started out as a long-term substitute for the nursing office in Bethel during the 2005-2006 school year. And then, in the 2006-2007 school year, was hired as a permanent school nurse at the junior, senior high school. And Glenna shared a lot of history yesterday. She's seen the full gamut of medical conditions that have come through, and in fact, has saved some lives of our students. And, you know, we're extremely grateful for the service that Glenna has given to the district. She certainly will be missed at the high school. She was supposed to be roasted a little bit by Mr. Leester yesterday, but she quickly flipped the tables. And the quiet nurse that sits in the office every day quickly became what nobody knew existed. And Glenna gave a great kind of goodbye speech yesterday, and we just want to say thank you and congratulations for all your years of service. So I know they're not here, and I'll quickly just run through some of the others. Mike Bolter retired back in November 29th. He was hired back in 1991 and served as both a teacher and administrator in the district, was in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, and ended his career for us as a fifth-grade teacher. We had Marie de Phillips, that was hired back in 2000, at 2000, 2001 school year to serve as an art teacher at Penburneville, and then in 2010, transitioned over to be the art teacher for both Bethel and Penburneville. Nancy Fisher was hired back in 2004 as a long-term substitute at Penburneville to serve in fourth grade. And during her time, she has served as both a fifth-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher, a third-grade teacher, and a fourth-grade teacher at Penburneville. Steph Fox was hired back on August 1st, 1981 as a half-time temporary teacher. She's put in 33 years of service for us, was quickly moved that next year to a full-time first-grade teacher, and has served a kindergarten first, second, and most recently, fourth grade, and spent the majority of her career in fourth grade. Thirty-three years.
I was born in 83, I don't, 38.
You mean 81?
1989? Oh, I'm sorry. 1989. Maybe I should learn to read, not math. Michelle Snyder at our junior, senior high school in the cafeteria. Michelle started with the district in 1997 as a cashier, but served as a substitute for us in the cafeteria starting in 95. And then was transferred from Penburneville to the junior, senior high school as a cashier, and eventually, a full-time cafeteria worker, and was provided, including the substitute service, 26 years of service to the district. And then two of our district office staff, Diane Archuska, was hired back in 2005 as child accounting and remained there for 17 years. And Barb Whelan was hired back in 1999 to be the administrative assistant for the assistant superintendent, the curriculum office, and gave 23 years of service to us. So we are profoundly lucky to have had each of these individuals, each one of them, to give us service. They certainly dedicated a large portion of their life to Topahocken, and they embody everything positive about Topahocken, and we're extremely proud to have had them on staff and to be part of our family. So once again, congratulations, everybody, and best wishes on your retirement.
To echo what Dr. Neznik said, some of them folks voted as much time in this district as I am alive, which is impressive. So thank you. Thank you for your service. The people who have made this a lot of good, and the people like you that make it good, so thank you. Go right into your report.
Sure, I have two items for my report tonight. The first, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson to talk about the football co-op sponsorship.
Okay, thank you again for allowing me to present this to you. So a lot has happened since the last time we met and discussed the football co-op. First, thank you for approving of me to continue those conversations. But, so the night after we had met, Conrad Weiser School Board of Directors approved the co-op on their end, and we just recently got the contract from them. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it yet, a documentistic forwarded on or, but I mean, there's no surprises in the contract. Exactly how I presented it is how it looks, in terms of the cost per player, you know, that would be participated in football at Conrad Weiser. I talked to the other Berks County schools that currently offer the call-up of football to see how they handle their transportation. And all of them provide one-way transportation to the school on school days. And then it is the parent's responsibility to pick them up at the school after practices, after games, and then also get them to and from on non-school days, just like a parent would be required to do that for their kids attending Topahocken and participating in sports at Topahocken. We had a meeting with interested students and several of the coaches from Conrad Weiser Football. They came up to Topahocken the one day, met our interested students in the library. Dr. Neznik was there, I was there. The coach had a lot of great things to say to our kids, offered them some information about upcoming summer workouts, strength and conditioning, football 101, gave them the schedule for what the season would look like as well, and then gave them some information to take home to discuss with their parents and indicate whether or not they were interested. And then recently, obviously, in the school year, we had sign-ups for our sports for next year, and we included football in there as a tentative sport for students to indicate whether they were interested. And we had 33 sign up, 20 junior high and 13 high school. That's current. I mean, it could change. More people can certainly sign up. I mean, we have kids that are signing up for sports a week before they start. So that could change. Those are just the ones that have indicated so far that they were interested. And an email went out to parents, actually, just sent out today, with some information, if it's approved, you know, we will likely be getting together for a parent informational meeting so that they can understand more how the process will work with transportation. That's about it. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How many students, is there a local limit? How many students Conrad Weiser will take from us?
No limit.
No limit. And we're only paying for the kids that are rostered?
Rostered, correct. So I mean, if, if 33 indicate that they're interested, but then, you know, they never complete all the paperwork, I mean, those are the kids that are interested. Only a handful have completed all the necessary paperwork to participate in sports. So, you know, just because there says 33, there doesn't necessarily mean all 33 will actually physically go out for the team on that first day. So yes, the total amount that we would pay would be the rostered players.
Another question with sports.
And no cut, I'm sorry. If there are no cuts.
We require our teams to fundraise, correct?
We don't require them to fundraise. It is, it benefits them if they do fundraise. They will have money in their sports boosters account to use for, you know, certain items that benefit the athletes. For example, you know, if a team, we just pitched up our track season, we have kids that medal and qualified for districts and states, they get a jacket with their accomplishments embroidered on the back, and the track boosters pays for it.
They paid for it now, but they didn't pay for it before. Kids had to pay for that out of pocket.
Well, we've had the track, the Sterling Hop and Track Inviter has been very successful, and that has raised a lot of money for the track account. And so what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, if teams don't fundraise, then, you know, extra things like that could come out of pocket if they want.
I have a couple of things to bring up about. And, you know, looking at the numbers you shared, is soccer our most expensive sport?
I don't think so. Probably, I'm going to guess basketball is probably the most expensive.
You shouldn't be guessing. I asked you to come with these numbers. No, it's not. I did seriously ask you last meeting to have the numbers of what all the sports cost.
Oh, I did not remember that.
So another thing, and I'm sorry to come at you, but this one kind of bothers me. This might be just me personal. Why send that email out today? Why not wait till tomorrow until we know a direction?
I mean, it wasn't necessarily planned for today. I've been trying to get it out, but it's been extremely busy, the tendencies and stuff, award ceremonies. So, I mean, it didn't go out today because the board meeting was today.
I know, but.
I had extra time because I was at school, you know, today. I did one of the flex inserts this morning, so I had time this afternoon. I live an hour away, I'm not going to go home or even back. So I had extra time to get some stuff done.
So getting back to the cost, you know, that is basically over double of any other sport we offer. The cost per student.
Oh, first, the 500 and 350?
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you, you know, I did put some numbers together for Dr. Neznik last, last night, and I mean, if you look at the overall cost for like football program.
I was just saying.
A lot of equipment goes into that because of the protective equipment that other sports don't have. I mean, soccer, you need a pair of shorts, a shirt, and a soccer ball.
I'm just saying, for what the district is providing for these essentially 33 students, we're providing a lot more for these 33 students than we are for the rest of the student population to play one sport.
I mean, there are other costs associated with, you know, there's like, the biggest, the biggest amount that you see there is probably the transportation part.
Now, I'm just looking at the numbers you sent us, which was.
Because obviously, all, all the sports do require transportation.
Setting no, no transportation aside, the cost for football is 500, and I think the cost for soccer, as you presented, was, I think, came out to 273.
Yeah, but that's not, that has to change because uniforms are every five years. So you have to take the total of uniforms and divide that by five. So an actuality soccer comes out to 210.
210, okay. And then if we throw in the transportation costs to take our students over to Conrad Weiser, which for our practices here, we don't have, that, that number gets proportionately spread out.
I mean, football is just a different, it's a different sport. As, as you can see with.
I'm not arguing that part at all. What I'm arguing is, how do I sit here and say, well, for you 30, we can do this, but for the other 1,100, we don't. And that's where I think, if we're going to do something like this, there has to be something put back onto the students that are participating as some sort of fundraising to make up some of that difference. I don't know what everyone else feels, this is just my idea.
Do we differentiate between children who play baseball versus basketball versus soccer versus they play in the band and they don't play a sport?
Well, I can speak about playing in a band. I had to buy my kids instruments, and that was thousands of dollars.
I'm just asking.
I could also say that we offer those sports, but we don't offer this sport in our school district. So if we, at, for instance, there was a girl who swam. She was on a swim team, she competed. Her parents paid for that. Her parents paid for the pitch. Her parents paid for her lessons. They paid for that. That wasn't something that we offered.
We're talking about $70 million school renovation, and we're nickeling and, I mean, 33 kids got one opportunity to play football. The point is, if you give money to the football kids to go, how do you justify the fairness to supporting more of the soccer, the basketball, the baseball? I mean, it's not that we're pinching the pennies or worrying about spending that money. We're just saying, how do we show that we're trying to treat everybody with the same opportunity of cost from the school district going to that sport?
There's a parent.
It's not, it's not that we don't want to spend it. Nobody's saying we don't support this. It's saying, how do we make sure that we're not making the soccer program or the basketball or the baseball program feel left out, that they're not getting $500 towards sports gear? I totally agree that the football.
But there's a parent sitting out here who's come here for their kid to play a different sport that we don't have either, which is lacrosse. So what if there's a co-op for lacrosse too?
Well, we're talking 33 kids right now. So lacrosse is, is not the topic right now.
Oh, wait, wait. You gotta, you gotta stop there. If we're, if we're, we're here for kids, it doesn't matter if it's 33 or one. If we're going to, to spread out and offer lacrosse the board, we have to be open to them discussions. We can't just say, oh, we're not gonna, because there's only one. Like, that attitude doesn't work.
Who said, we're talking about a football agenda? That's on the agenda right now.
And I've, I've talked to Conrad Weiser about a potential lacrosse co-op, and as of right now, they haven't indicated that they're interested. You know, just like, you know, for the past however many years, I could not find a school that was interested in co-upping football. It's tough to find these schools that are interested in allowing students from other schools to come and play at their, at their school.
I think the fundraising and booster for Topahocken, because Topahocken, I think that's great. Let them raise money, let the parents, let the people that support it, support it. But we're talking about, we're talking about soccer and their uniforms, and we're going to talk about football and uniforms. It's different sports. We're not looking at basketball, comparing it to soccer. We're looking at golf and comparing it to baseball. We don't do that. And for all, for some reason, we're comparing soccer to football. Two completely different ends of the spectrum.
Still adding.
Yeah, different sports.
I mean, I will say that we, you know, all the sports that we offer, we don't like, we don't cut anything from those specific team budgets. Like, they get what they need and what they want for the most part. So we're not requiring people to fundraise to play soccer, to play basketball, to play any sport at Topahocken. They do fundraise because it's nice to have those extra, extra things. You know, it's, it's nice to be able to pay for summer leagues and clinics and, you know, having a special instructor come in and, and teach the kids for a day. You know, I mean, those things are really nice, and that's why we have the, you know, the great sports boosters program we do have and, and, you know, to allow our kids to do that. We are not requiring them to fundraise to play soccer. So I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, we're paying more for, you know, a sport compared to other sports that we have. But again, that's football, and that's, and you can see there what the cost starts, start program. It's a lot more than any other sport that we currently offer. And that's just, that's the nature of that sport, and how much equipment is involved in that sport.
And that's what you're stating. You are pulling this out and saying, this is completely different, and that's what we are responding to, that all the other sports we offer are so much less in money. And this board is very conscious of money. I mean, you can criticize us and say, I mean, they go on a dime, but we have reserves other schools wouldn't, they don't, they don't dream of. And there's a reason for that. And we are very conscientious of every single thing that comes to us. It drives Mr. Neznik, Dr. Neznik crazy sometimes. I totally get it. But that's the way I run my household. I compare two things to see, am I going to do the cheaper or the expensive? Where's the quality? Where, what can I do without? It's the same thing here. And we're, you know, I, I have done research, and there's glaring, glaring differences in cost for this particular sport. That's the startup, of course, which we're not talking about right now. We're talking about product.
I think the one thing they like to keep in mind is, I think we have to look at it, is what do we need, to be successful programs, what do we need to give our kids and our staff those resources? So, you know, obviously, for us to run our English language arts department is, you know, less than to bring our math department, is less to run, you know, our science department. And I think if you compare academic programs and programs we run in the district, they all vary per pupil. I mean, exponentially, we probably spend a lot more money per pupil on ag than we would say, you know, math department, you know, or, you know, the music department. Gets a whole lot more money than the science department we spend every year. But I think we, I think one of the things that we can pride ourselves on is, we provide the necessary resources to get the job done for what they need.
And that is why we're here, education, music, sports, all that is extra. And every school district is strong in something and weak in others. And, or they offer this great program and they don't. You know, I mean, that is one thing I am concerned about. We have a pretty strong soccer program. And I know that you said there's only two kids in this group that, you know, are soccer players. But that's going to change. It could be less, it could be more next year. It could be five more kids. So now we've weakened a program that we are known for to offer, you know, something on the side here.
I don't look at it as we're offering something on the side. We're offering something for, for our kids who don't have that opportunity. And we've, we've had a lot of kids who have come through our district and have either moved out of our district so they could play football, or unfortunately, had had that opportunity taken away. So I don't look at it as a side gig. I also don't think it's going to affect our overall soccer program. I mean, Oley and Fleetwood have been doing a football co-op for 10 years, and Oley continues to be one of the best teams in Berks County in soccer. I mean, they're about the same size as us. They might be a little bit bigger. But at the end of the day, the kids that you are losing to football are not kids who are generally going to be involved in soccer, in golf, in cross-country. It's going to be those kids who don't have that opportunity right now to play a sport in the fall. And it's only going to benefit them for the other sports that they do play in the winter or in the spring.
The other thing that came, I'm sorry, I lost it. I mean, it looked. Is, there is always, you know, if we embark on this journey with Conrad Weiser, we always have the right to, to end that relationship. I mean, the last clause says that we can terminate the agreement in writing within 90 days' notice. So. What's that? It does go the ways. So it, you know, we could revise that if it's something different. But I don't, from my perspective, and, and one of the things I did, I talked to our soccer coach the other day, and I said to him, tell me what your fear is, the boys soccer coach, what's your fear? And he said to me, I've got two trains of thought. The teacher in me, the parent in me says, we should give every opportunity to every one of our kids. The coach in me says, I'm not nervous for the first two years. I'm not sure what's going to happen in year three and four. And I don't know that any of us do. We may find out in year three and four that we have no kids interested, and we're like, well, we gave it a shot. We may find out in year three and four that we have 100 kids, and now it's time that we look and pursue our own programs. We may find out that it, it takes a hit to our soccer program. We may find out that it doesn't hit any. You know, I think I shared with some of you, you know, now, I know it's a cultural thing, but coming from a district in School Hill Haven, where they have 1,100 kids, they have a tremendous soccer program and a tremendous football program. And they have a. they have a tremendous soccer program and a tremendous football program. And they have eleven hundred kids that they're pulling from district wide. We've got thirteen hundred, so we've got a few more than they do. Now, Skookal County football is a culture thing. I get that. There's a, you know, and it's been built over the years. But the neat thing is, they do share each other's players from time to time, you know, and that may be another thing we talk about is, you know, we may have to have some compromises between, you know, some of our sports and allow kids to operate on both teams. From my perspective, and I will tell you my recommendation, is that we embark on it and see it because it provides another opportunity for our kids. I know there's a lot of unknowns. I know there's a lot of what ifs, but it also can provide a lot of potential. From my perspective, I think the kids that we're gonna tap into are kids that are not involved, that are on the edge, that need something to grab a hold of. It's going to take a very special kid to wanna spend seven-thirty to four-thirty during the summer, during the hottest part of the summer, busting their butt in a weight room, being on the fields. It doesn't take just any kid. It takes some dedication. At that point, two days is more part of the season and they would be required.
So the law has changed then? Because when my kids played ball scores, I think it was three weeks before the start date is when the coaches were allowed to require my kids to do anything.
Right, that's what, that's what Dr. Netz is talking about.
I thought you said during the summer.
Yeah, he's talking about the start.
During August.
The start of August. So football will start a week before all the other ball sports and they call that their heat acclimation period where they don't put pads on, you know, they're just getting used to how hot it is outside. And then, yeah, and then just like our practices, you know, before school starts, you have more time during the day to practice, right? So they'll do like a morning session and then maybe take a break and eat lunch, watch film, and then do an afternoon session. So no, the rules have to change.
Okay.
The voluntary summer workouts are strongly encouraged and they're strongly encouraged in all sports. Before I came here this evening, pouring down rain now, guess who's practicing on the field? Our soccer team. All right, not everyone. It's voluntary. You don't have to go, but if you wanna be in the best shape come the start of the season, you probably don't wanna be sitting around all summer watching TV. You wanna be out there, you know, getting yourself ready. So it's the same for football and any opportunities that they provide in the summer.
So I've talked to a couple of football coaches and they have said the opposite of what you said. They said, oh yeah, it's not required. But if those kids don't come, we'll see how their year goes. So I'm like, okay, and then if they're not a kid from that school, to me, that's one disadvantage too. Now, I've heard only good things about this coach, so I'm hoping he's not looking that way. Because, I mean, I've been told by coaches, yeah, you don't go on family vacation. You don't, um, my cousin went to Wilson, Wilson, right? And he wasn't allowed to miss during the summer those optional things or else he stopped and then she was told he was still on the field.
I mean, I think at the end of the day, and the coach has preached this, you know, the best eleven kids will be starting on the Friday night. And I think he, I think he practices that philosophy. You know, whether that means you don't show up for a thing until the first day of practice and you're just that naturally talented and good or you bust your butt all summer.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the best eleven play. So, I mean, I find it hard to believe that one of the best eleven sits out all summer and doesn't do a thing.
Well, sometimes kids just start on their own, have their own regimens that they do. It just, I feel in Toppahawkans, we are about education, family and community. And the few coaches, might be only three, that I've talked to, it's not about family. It's about this sport. This comes first. And that bothers me because I want our kids to be raised to, first of all, be around in the workforce and speak well and get a job. But second of all, to have the values that we, I believe as a community, push forward.
I would, um, I would argue that the three things that you just stated, education, family, community, are three of the biggest things that I'll say any sport can help teach a child, but certainly of all of them, football. I mean, you wanna talk about, a kid who's dedicated to football is not gonna be not doing his schoolwork. He wants to be on the field. He wants to go to practice. Most likely, he wants to bust his butt to be a starter. And he's gonna do his schoolwork because he knows if he doesn't, he's not gonna be on that field up front.
Well, that's pretty much the same for the other sports.
I'm not, I'm saying all sports. They teach, so many valuable life lessons are learned on a field, on a court, whatever. And they're all things that push kids to excel academically too. If a kid is dedicated to a sport, and I'm not just saying football, soccer. Do you think our star soccer player at Toppahawkans is gonna not do their schoolwork and can't go out on the field? Absolutely not. The coach is gonna be riding him. Parents are probably gonna be riding him. The community could be behind it. Family, talk about family. Go out on a football field and you won't talk about a family, extended family.
Right.
Community, go to a school that has football on a Friday night, yeah, and look around and tell me what is there. Community, people who don't even have children playing, show up at a football field on a Friday night to watch their, their community play a sport. It probably, yeah, I'm not, I'm-
I mean, since you're not there, you don't know. I was part of that community and we supported the parents. We support each other in education. One of our kids was having trouble. We were all talking about it. Well, how can we help all of our other students in this particular class?
It's the same across the board. I don't run a football program, but-
So there's no contract as far as do we have to commit to so many years?
Yes, yes, there is.
Well, that's a PIA double A thing.
Okay.
Because, you know, it ultimately also needs to be approved at the PIA double A level, which, you know, as long as the boards promote schools to approve it, they're not gonna reject it. But on the PIA double A level, because of the classification parameters when they do their enrollment reports, we're coming in right now and they've already done their enrollment for the next, and their evaluation for the next two years. The only reason we're able to come in and enter something right now is because it doesn't change classification. Because Conrad Weiser doesn't move up by accepting our kids. So that's why we're allowed to do it now. Otherwise, you're only allowed to do it one odd year. So, you know, you're only allowed to present a co-op when an odd year changes classification. So basically, we have these two years that we're given, so it's basically free, you know, because we're not changing classification from the PIA double A. And then, you know, they're gonna run their classification report again next, uh, two years from now. So it's a four-year, basically a four-year agreement.
So what happens if their classification or change is there if we have any influx coming in?
They have indicated that they, they are not interested in dropping the contract or dropping the co-op just because of changing the classification.
So we have to commit to four years? Because I've had a couple of parents say to me, why are we committing to that longer period? Why not to three?
Again, it's a PIA double A policy.
Well, because we're-
I thought it was a two-
We commit to it, but we could terminate that sooner.
Right, yeah, that was asked here and, you know, why are we terminating it?
Yes.
At this time, I'm gonna hit pause on the board. I ask the president to sit back and anybody in the audience that wants to comment just on this topic, to raise your hand, state your name, and, uh, we'll, ladies first.
All right. Michelle Wright.
Please stand.
So I just have a question because I am that lacrosse mom that everyone is thinking about, um, which I appreciate you bringing that up. Once again, I am pro football. My husband played football all through. Um, obviously, my boy has a heart defect and he's not playing football. And my other boy has spaghetti arms, so he probably won't play football either. But is there an opportunity for my girls to play football? Because there's nothing new being offered for my girls. And if they can't play lacrosse, I know they're tough enough to put on some pads and bust some ass, so just wondering if that's an option.
I mean, they've had girls in the past that have played in their youth program and even made it up to the high school level to an extent against a very physical sport and so.
You, Matt Bella.
Elko does it. Elko has a girl. She starts, she's a starter.
And Bella's nothing compared to little Miss Genevieve coming up.
Yeah, there's nothing that says they can't play.
Okay.
I honestly, from my perspective, I welcome it. It's good for one, it's good for all.
I mean, I'd love to see lacrosse, but just looking to see what other options there are because there's, this is just being put out there that thirty-three boys are interested in playing, but nothing was brought up to any of the girls.
The whole survey was put out.
The survey was put out, yeah. We had, we had girls that signed the initial survey that was put out. So it was put out to everyone. I think there was maybe three or four girls on there, but-
My daughter signed up, it was to me.
Yeah, I just pulled that one in, but when we had-
She's a kicker.
When we had a meeting with the coaches, no girls showed up to the meeting. And when we did online sign-ups at the end of the school year, um, one girl had indicated that she was interested in football and soccer. They're both the same season, so it'd be tough balance to do both, but I know it's been done in the past because when we schedule some of our soccer games on Friday night, the other team generally, you know, will ask us to move them if they have a soccer player that also plays football. Basically, they, they're kickers.
So is football only played on a Friday night? They don't do other nights?
What?
Is football only played on a Friday night or Saturday night?
For varsity, typically, it's only a Friday night or a Saturday.
Yeah, my name's Steve Bateman. Um, I am currently coaching your youth in football at Myers Town. So the fact that you're taking away kids from a soccer program, these kids have grown up since they're five years old playing football. And I hear that the amount of two-hundred-and-eleven dollars per kid for soccer, for how much have you put toward those kids for football over these last, how many years your school's been in existence? Those soccer kids are way ahead of what you've given those kids to wanna play football. I coach them for free at Myers Town, okay? Great kids who I feel have the potential to get scholarships to college, but they reach seventh grade and they're done. They have nowhere to go. Nowhere. And to take that away from the kid, when you, when they graduate from our program and you see the looks on their face like, I'm never gonna play football again, I think that's wrong. I moved out here twelve years ago, put it down payment on our house, okay? And said to my, my then boy, let's go, let's go and work at the football field. I went over to the school, the white children. I'm like, oh great, they're having a football game. I wanna, they're in a football field. I'm like, that's unheard of to me. Where I come from, football is big. I pulled their down payment on the house and moved somewhere else. You know, I, I feel, Coach Mortar at Weiser, I've coached there for two years. I've coached for twenty-six seasons, okay? I know Coach Mortar, great guy. He is gonna take care of your kids, okay? If they are not doing their schoolwork, they will not play, okay? To your, to your point about showing up for the summer, if they don't show up, that's, that's their own fault. If they wanna sit home and play games and on their, you know, Xbox or whatever, that's all in that. Chances are they're not gonna see the field, okay? But Weiser is hurting for kids. That's why they opened up this co-op. They need these players. They don't need a high, a middle school team because they need the numbers. They're bringing these kids up to high school at a very young age. So those thirty-three kids are gonna help them, plus it's gonna help your kids. Not all, not everybody is a soccer player. I know you're a soccer school, but let's face it. If those kids are driving to Myers Town to play football for a reason, if they wanted to play soccer, they'd be here playing soccer. So I, I think it's really, um, not fair if, if you don't hurt to hear this because you're, you're holding back kids from doing something that they love from the age of five years old up till they're thirteen, fourteen years old. So, I mean, keep an open mind and, you know, I, I really hope they consider it because there are some, there are some good kids in this district that love this sport of football. So, thank you.
Ben Ruffner, I've been in this school district for a number of years. I had two older boys that played football for Myers Town. And when they moved up to junior high, you know, they couldn't play anymore and they were pretty much heartbroken. I taught with Brent back then about trying to get something done. Um, I know it comes down to the cost. You said it's the cost for soccer uniforms. What about the cost for the turf field? I think that outweighs the cost for the football program. Am I correct in saying that?
That's how far you wanna spread it across and look at it. I mean, yeah, you can slice, you can slice things many ways.
Yeah. The thing is, we tell our kids all the time, you can be anything you wanna be if you put your mind to it and work hard. But you're not gonna allow them to do a sport they love. I have a thirteen-year-old who is an exceptional student, exceptional athlete. He works hard and he dreams of playing college football. But if he cannot play football from eighth grade on, it's probably not gonna happen. So you're telling this kid that he can't pursue his dreams because you're not gonna offer a program plus the cost. And I know that's what it comes down to, it's cost. So think about that.
Can I just say one more thing? I don't, I don't know how you can put a cost on a kid, on a kid's dream. Five hundred dollars for thirty-three kids, okay, think about it, really is not a lot of money. I don't, I don't live in this district. I don't know what your budget is, but, but to say that's a lot of money for these kids to do something that they love to do, to be, is just, I can't, I can't wrap my brain around that.
And to your point, it's not a lot of money. But I concurred with a couple of board members here today. It's not a lot of money. But it's over and above what we're doing for any other student here. That's the difference. From my perspective, that's the difference. How do I sit here and say, Mrs. Wright, we're not gonna do lacrosse because it's too costly? Do you know, you know what I mean? For one student, how do I sit here and justify offering something new over and above what we're doing currently when it costs a lot more than what we're doing currently? And one of the, one of the other board members here had a phenomenal idea. And I support this idea if the rest of the board goes along with it, that for this year, we front that five hundred dollars. But for next year, it's two-fifty and the kids gotta create a booster club and do the other two-fifty themselves.
That's perfect.
If they're into it.
Let's do it.
If they're into it, let's do it.
Every sport fundraises.
Exactly. But it puts, it puts that responsibility, and Mr. Ruffner, you were here with the wrestlers.
Yeah.
You put your money where your mouth was. You made it happen. You brought kids into the program.
I did. And you know what? I've seen the wrestling program suffer because of not having football. I've seen great wrestlers leave this district because they wanted to play football and they went somewhere where they could do both.
So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I'm one of nine, but that's where I'm at.
Can I just sum real quick, Tom?
Go ahead, Brett.
In terms of lacrosse, I would support that one hundred percent, even if we only had one kid that was interested in lacrosse. If we could get a co-op with another school and send that one person there to play, I would support that one hundred percent. The problem is, again, I'll reiterate, we can't just say, hey, you know, you, you need to take us and we wanna play this sport, so you need to take us. The bottom line is, schools don't wanna take us. And lacrosse, we have even a more of a limited pool to choose from because Hamburg doesn't have it, Elko doesn't have it, you know. The more of the schools that surround us don't have the sport. And Skookal Valley already has a co-op, so they, you know, now I'm gonna do another one. So the only one we have right now is Conrad Weiser. A couple of years ago, when, when we had approached them about a potential co-op, their lacrosse program was totally, totally parent-funded. It was a club sport at Conrad Weiser. So they totally, they totally funded that program through- through fundraising. And at that time, they didn't wanna do a co-op because of that fundraising effort and the fact that it wasn't a school-sponsored sport. Now that it is a school-sponsored sport, hopefully they will be interested. I, I really think they will be interested because they were hurting for numbers this year, especially on the boys' side. Um, I'm all about creating as many opportunities for our kids as possible. You know, I know cost is always something to, to be mindful.
But if we create that opportunity and for that spread thin, if we spread out that thin, pretty soon we're doing a lot of everything, but, but not good in anything too, you know. And that goes the same in education. You know, we could offer, we could offer fifty million programs in all these different clubs, but we're not good at it.
I, I, I realize we're saying, but again, at the end of the day, if you, like, you're not gonna, you're not gonna change a sport and not represent your school, put on a Topah Hockin uniform to go to a different school and play. We're, we're talking about a small pool of kids here, which is why a co-op is what makes sense and not starting your own program. I know we can sit here and say, "Wow, we had fifty kids that signed, you know, a, a thing that said that."
I think we're light years from starting our own program at this point.
Right, right. I, I think, I think at this point, it's been something that the, the school district has starved for for so long that kids hear the word football and they're like, you know, "I'm interested in that. I wanna give it a shot," but they, you know, they don't know what all goes into the sport of football, the amount of contact associated in a sport like that, the amount of risk to injury, and then also the amount of, um, extra time that's needed to, to fully prepare for a sport like football. Like, if you don't strength train and lift weights, you will not be successful at, at football, 'cause you're gonna get hurt, you know? I, I mean, that's not the same for some of the other sports, you know? I mean, you can, you can play baseball and not spend hours and hours and hours in the labor. It's gonna make you more successful if you do, but you don't need to do it.
So are, are we willing to explore Kyle's idea of, you know, fundraising might be a little more difficult now to get that accomplished, but are we willing to pursue it year one with contingencies for year two, three, four?
Somebody needs to make a motion one way or another, or we're not interested, we're interested, we're interested with these stipulations?
Well, I wanted to respond to some of the comments that the coach made, is that here at the Topah Hockin, we, we have a youth soccer program, but as parents, we also pay for all that. You said, you know, those parents had to pay and, and, and we, we have volunteer coaches. So our youth program, same as you, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, we're all volunteers and, but the parents don't pay anything.
Sorry?
Parents don't pay anything where I coach.
Okay.
Parents don't pay anything.
Well, here, you know, we, we ran our kids. We, um, some of the parents got training so they could be coaches, um, for our youth so that they could feed, you know, so we do do that. And, and I'm, I'm not against dreams, but I also feel that, again, this sport is, we try to be real, we try to watch the numbers, and we're known for that, and there, there has to be a limit somewhere, and that's what we're looking at, and that's why I was comparing. But if we can put, okay, my kids played soccer, they played other sports too. There were some parents that were so poor, and my kids were, they couldn't, okay, we needed shin guards. You're not allowed to play without shin guards. They could not afford the shin guards. They couldn't afford the shoes. And so other parents found out, and we kinda quietly networked, and we made sure those kids, because we bought them, bought the shin guards, which were thirty bucks, bought the shoes, which were a hundred and twenty. That's nothing compared to if a football player doesn't have all their padding and their three hundred and fifty-dollar helmet and all the other things they need. That would've been pretty much for us as parents to get together and say, "Well, we'll help this, this child." So I look at that as, so now we're gonna say to the school, "Okay, you pay it." Well, that's not fair to the soccer players. My daughter played field hockey. We had to buy a special mouth guard that was fitted for her mouth, nobody else's. That was expensive, but I paid for that 'cause she wanted to do it. So there's dreams and then there's, you know, things that we have to put in check. And so I think a co-op is a way to go that, you know, without having our own program. And, but I think we need to make parents responsible and the kids, but it's gonna be the parents that, you know, do all the fundraising. And I know to other football programs, other schools, I've been told, "Oh, the tickets, the tickets, five, they, they pay for the program." Do you know, we removed the entrance fee for soccer 'cause we had parents who couldn't afford to come to see their own kid play or else give their elementary school two bucks to get a hot dog. I mean, that's where we are, and so we don't even charge for these people to come in.
And could I say something to your point?
Yes.
You're talking about parents not having the money to buy a mouthpiece, okay? Think about the kid who has the potential to go on to college and you're talking thirty-five thousand dollars a year, okay? And that kid will never see a college football field if he doesn't get, okay? I, I have, one of my players is a starting DN for Penn State right now, Nick Harper, and I coached him at Pen Ridge. His parents would've never, never gotten him into football at Penn State. He would've never went to Penn State if he didn't go on a full ride, and that's what he got.
That's great.
And, and, you know, so parents have to suffer a little bit. I buy my son, who plays at Elkhart, when he's a sophomore, I buy him his own equipment every year. I know it costs eight hundred dollars every year, but you know what? I want my kid to have the best. So that's what I'm gonna do. So I'm gonna suck it up and, and I'm gonna take away from myself, from my kid. And that's, there's a lot of parents out there that are willing to do that if they have the opportunity, but they have to give them the opportunity.
And that's great. If you have that eight hundred to put on, so talking about parents didn't have the.
I don't. I don't have the eight hundred, that's the thing.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not rich, but I do it for my kid. And that's why I'm here. I'm not advocating, I'm not here advocating that, you know, for Conrad Wyser because I know Coach Mortar. I'm not, I'm advocating for these kids that wanna play football. That's why I'm here tonight. I have no affiliation with the school district.
Yeah.
I have, I have a relationship with kids from the school district that wanna play football. That's why I'm here.
I got one question. This is, you said about Wyser, they're struggling to have enough players.
Yep.
Is that up and down the system or is that a temporary thing? Or what's the reason for that? Cause they got a much larger population than we do.
When I coached for Wyser, okay, they had, they're the little scouts president, you weren't allowed to hit, okay? We're, we're talking football. You weren't allowed to hit during the week, okay? So kids go in on Saturday or Sunday, wherever, depending what level they were at, not knowing how to hit on the football field, they're getting beat forty-five down, then kids are quitting. They're going, they're playing lacrosse instead, okay? So their numbers were just down. They had really good players and they lost a lot of them to that philosophy that you can't hit. They weren't learning the game, okay? Now they got a different president in there and things are turning around, but it's, it's like ten years until they're gonna get the numbers back, okay? Coach Mortar, just for the kid in the dorm.
I guess that was my concern, because they, if this is just like a temporary downside and you get numbers back, and we got ten kids or fifteen kids that are competing for positions, then their parents are like, "Well, you know, they're taking top like class."
I don't think Coach Mortar's, Coach Mortar's gonna put the, the best players on the field.
Oh, I understand that.
With garbage, okay, but.
I'm seeing any other situation.
I can address a little bit of that, just with the way that my oldest daughter played, um, lacrosse for Skookal Valley, but attended Topah Hockin because they were a club team still. And she ended up, from Topah Hockin, she was the captain of the team. So they show, there's no discrimination as far as I was concerned with how they make their team work. Um, you know, they knew that she was never going to be a Skookal Valley student, and they still not just welcomed her to play, but made her one of the captains. And she went on and played college lacrosse and had a scholarship for college.
Oh, that's the way it should be.
So that was a hundred and ten thousand dollars that I didn't have to pay.
That's the way it should be. I mean, I know we got kids that come over in our act program and they become chapter president here and, you know, they go on to do great things and then they go on to Hockin and they're a different school. So it's, as long as that philosophy carries through, it's good. But if something changes, then that, we just also lost that opportunity for our kids when they've been at it. I guess that would be it.
But you can't take that risk. If, if you're, if you're afraid of that happening and you, and you aren't willing to take a risk, you're never gonna know whether that hap, you know, whether that happens or not. You gotta give, you gotta take the opportunity, you know, you can say, you know, "Should I buy this car? I don't know if it's gonna break down tomorrow." You know, you know what I mean? If you don't take a risk, you, you're never gonna know. You're never gonna know what the outcome is.
Mr. Palmer, uh, and I, I, I know they're struggling for their, their sub, their sub-varsity, um, programs, and it takes the sub-varsity programs to, to have a, you know, a, a good, strong varsity program, but they don't, they don't struggle with varsity. So he's willing to take, you know, take on our kids, and they have more than enough kids on their varsity team. He, he wants to take on our kids because he wants to create more opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, I guess, you know, at some point, so talking to parents and all that.
I made you make a motion to approve the co-op with Topah Hockin and Conrad Wyser. Um, we, we gave the first year for the kids and then second year through fourth year, you got a, um, booster slash parents that helped cover your lacrosse. Second, that. Roll call.
Patrick.
Yes.
Lionel.
Yes.
Chris Miller?
No. No.
Heck?
Yes.
Cofflin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Holger?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Fex?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, keep in mind. I don't lean on you, Ben. You did it with wrestling. Don't let me dab on this one.
Don't worry about it.
We have a, we have a very strong boosters program. We need some more parents to get involved, but we do have a strong boosters program to help out.
It sounds thirty-three new faces to, sixty-six new faces.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to do other sports, so.
I know.
I thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Kyle, you're gonna have those numbers by tomorrow.
I'll need them.
I would never have not gotten that.
I did ask you that at the end, at the end. I said, I wanted to.
We discussed a lot, just like tonight, we discussed a lot, and I had a lot of stuff on my plate at the end of the year, so I apologize for, for forgetting that.
I apologize for coming back here a little bit.
Also, also sending out the email, um, sending out the email to parents again, if, if their, their strength and conditioning program started yesterday, and I want our kids and our parents to have all the opportunities possible if they want to get their kids involved in that, to get the information. And unfortunately.
I couldn't agree with you more, but the people around this room, sitting at this table, let all the opportunities, informations to make the best decision before we already have people have their hopes up or not up, before.
Right, and, but I can forward to the email. It was clearly stated that this is, this intended, this, you know, this is all pending approval.
We're good. We're, we're all at the same spot, so we're good. Let's move on. Comprehensive plan.
Is everyone okay if I excuse myself?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great summer, but I don't see you ever.
All right, the other item I have is our district's comprehensive plan. You should have a presentation in front of you. I'll put it up in a second. So every three years, we are required to identify priorities, areas of need, um, and where we wanna go. It does include a, this year they're creating a professional development piece. There's the teacher induction program, and there's a K-12 guidance program, and you have copies of each one of those. The three primary areas, priority areas that we created, Chris headed the initial committee, um, and then each administrat, sorry, Chris Hammer, um, and this is kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view of it, um, and we will post the actual plan on our website Friday tomorrow, and it will sit there for twenty-eight days, um, for final approval in July. But there's three main areas, English Language Arts, Mathematics, and School Climate. So Chris and I sat and we worked on, um, the areas of need that we have, kind of analyzing some data, um, having discussions with other administrators, other staff members. And at the secondary level, and I think Chris had presented this with Deb the other week, that there's this need for an MTSS system, a multi-tiered, um, system, uh, support system. And it's about providing interventions, it's hitting kids' needs. How do we, how do we provide interventions at a low level, and then how do we get more, a granular, at a higher level as a tier three? And so that is what we need to work through at the secondary level. Now, there are MTSS systems and RTI, um, systems, response to intervention systems at the elementary, um, and we are a state-approved venue that can identify a reading disability at the elementary through this program. So we have a successful program operating at the K-six program. That just needs refinement and tweaking. We don't have that program at the K, or the seven through twelve level, and that's what we're working on. Um, an analysis of the district performance on state assessments, particularly subgroup categories. In going through that, we know that there's certain areas that we need to look at. Our special education population is a subgroup that we need to take a look at. Um, our economically disadvantaged students are an area that we need to take a look at. And then develop a full K-12 action plan for addressing that. So this is kind of the framework for which we do that, and then, um, we develop that action plan. Now that, what we, you know, in our discussions, a lot of what we're missing or looking for at the English Language Arts level, we're also looking for at the Mathematics level. On the Climate side was a third priority we did. How do we keep creating our schools as opportunities and environments where kids wanna be, staff wanna be in those buildings? Um, and how do we get to know what we want out of, you know, what, what is, what should a Topi grad have? What should a Topi grad be? And so part of that school climate is creating a profile of what a Topah Hockin grad looks like, and kind of reverse-engineering some of that. Here's what we want, now how do we get to that level? You know, is it a good citizen? How do we make that happen? Is it somebody that's empathetic and makes good connections and communicates with people? How do we do that? We kind of reverse-engineer that, and at the same time, we're forming school climate committees. Um, you know, each building has a faculty advisory committee. The high school, junior senior high school for the ATSI plan has a school climate committee, but now how do we replicate that across the district? And here's how we're gonna make some of that happen. Um, so for English Language Arts, um, there's development of the MTSS system. There's the continuing of the RTII and MTSS at the elementary that I mentioned, refining it. Um, we made those instructional support teachers that we funded through COVID permanent, um, by taking a look at our retirees and where we needed to adjust. And so those individual teachers at both elementaries can now provide support both on the Mathematics side, but also on the, um, ELA side.
Were these the ones we originally funded with SRS?
Yes.
And so now we.
They're now permanent, yeah.
Just those, those funds have dried up, is that correct?
We still have some of those funds. And that's where the next, both the instructional coach that we, um, are looking to create and approve tonight would be through SRS funds. So we're gonna be shifting, and over the next couple of months, we'll be coming to you and kind of shifting some of that SRS and federal funding that's still available. But again, our shift for next year is how do we continue to refine, improve that instruction and that learning that's taking place? And so at the elementary level, we're working with, uh, Kline Sanders, who will be our instructional coach for next year. Phenomenal individual, has built strong relationships with staff already, has a very good grasp on, um, instructional practices, and she will transition and work with both Dennis and Tim, our director of teaching and learning. We need to develop, every year we develop a calendar of assessments. What are we looking to, what kind of data points are we drawing on? What we really should be looking out further beyond just a year. What's the multi-year assessment and data plan? Um, and part of that is, you know, we ask teachers, "Take a look at your data. Here's this data. Here's all this data. Organize the system and look at it." But one of the things we fail to do is, how do we actually teach teachers how to look at that data, how to use that data? But one of the things we fail to do is, how do we actually teach teachers how to look at that data, how to use that data? And part of that plan is determining what data we utilize. You know, we collect a lot of data. Do we need to collect more? Do we need to collect less? And so it's developing that plan that spans multiple years instead of just hunting and pecking each year. And then continuing building in grade-level team, uh, data meeting, but then also at the district level. Where Dennis and myself and Tim will get involved with the building principles and take a look at, alright, so let's talk about kindergarten. And then at a district level, let's take kindergarten Bethel, first kindergarten PB. And are we missing, can we, can we learn lessons from what Bethel's doing to apply to PB or vice versa? Or the junior, senior high school? And how do we kind of put that whole picture together? Uh, those next three bullets you can skip. Apparently I didn't delete when I copied and pasted. And then the school climate, again, creating a profile of a Topahocking grad that drives the needs within the district. So what do we want a Topi grad to look like? And then how do we get there? And then a formation of a district school climate committee. And that would be obviously conducting surveys with staff, students, and parents. The high school has had a lot of success, um, with Chris working through that committee, um, and convening that group. I think Kyle, you said on that, um, with the junior, senior high school. And I think Anthony said on it, Broding as well. Um, and we've gotten a lot of feedback that it's good to kind of gauge the environment of where we are and what we need to be. And then the components that I mentioned, uh, there's a professional development. So all of this, obviously, all these priorities then feed the need to get some training to people. Um, and that's where the professional development plan comes in place. There's an induction plan, chapter forty-nine, the state requirements, mandates that we have a cert protocol for all new teachers coming into the system. That's part of that induction plan or part of that comprehensive plan. And then this year, they're adding the K-12 guidance plan into that. And, uh, well, we approved our chapter three-three-nine plan several years ago. They're shifting it to a K-12 guidance plan. And that addresses career standards, attendance, mental health, post-secondary life as well. So all that, there's, um, a massive document that when you put that all together, comes out to be about a hundred-plus pages. Um, and you do have those, uh, documents there and they will be posted online for everybody as well.
So the chapter forty-nine, those, that's state requirements for your teachers, not our requirements?
It is. We are required to create a plan that meets the state requirements. So we customize it to what we want.
Are the instructional support teachers, is that a switch in positions or are they completely different positions?
They were, um, we, if, they're switching in positions.
We paid for it through SRS before. Is that a new position we're creating in the budget? Or is that a new, or is that a different, we're getting prioritized?
We're reprioritizing existing positions.
So it's not additional?
It's not additional positions.
Okay. What are we reprioritizing?
Based on our numbers, where we were, um, you know, where we may not needed, you know, three sections and we had three sections. Like PB is dropping from three sections this year to kindergarten to two. So based off of the reprioritizing and the retirements, we shifted people around who need that so that we can make those positions permanent.
And, uh, coaches?
That, that is a new position, but that's SRS.
But that will be, does that new position not continue after SRS funding comes out?
No. As of now. Now, if the priority shifts that we think that should be, you know, one of the things we will continue to do is look as retirements come in the future. Is that a position we see value and can we absorb that? But as of right now, I think on the agenda, I have it, that it's just for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four's to here.
And those people are aware of that, that that's where they're at?
Yes.
Do you think they're really needed right now because we're still pulling out of kids being taught at home and they need that extra coaching? Is what I'm thinking. Why are we talking about them?
The instructional coach. I, I think it's a combination. I, I think.
We have all the new.
There's a lot of new initiatives that we've, that we've thrown to try to, like, catch up a little bit. So I think it's that level of support. I think, um, I think when you take a look at where we were pre-COVID and post-COVID, there's a lot of backslide you gotta make up and there's a lot of, you know, continuing with progress that you've gotta balance and figure out. And, uh, I think sometimes, I think we've noticed that everybody didn't chime in any. I think we've also noticed, post-COVID, there's a lot of hesitation to try new things. Uh, because you've got so much material to fit in.
From teachers.
From teachers. Um, and I think this just gives kind of a colleague to be able to bounce ideas off of to try new things. You know, we go into a classroom and there's always that level of oversight evaluation where a colleague goes in and it's a little more, you know, collegiality, if you will.
So that is the comprehensive plan. And that ends my report. All right. Moving on to citizen student participation pertaining to agenda. I leave. Seeing none, we move on to buildings and grounds. Mr. Heck.
We are one here, really a great, generous, generous, grant sheet, World Bank Associates. Projects to be completed, connected with district office, must.
And, um, any questions?
What is the total cost of that project?
I don't think they even have a scope.
Projected to be, I thought we were stoning a lot. That's an awful lot of, you know, architectural fees for, I think, what we were thinking.
It's gonna sound.
Yeah. Uh, I would rethink this seriously.
Is that for the stormwater plan? Is that what you're doing? Stormwater runoff?
I thought we kept it less than a acre. We didn't have to.
We don't have to go to the county level, but we still have to go to stormwater.
So that twenty-nine thousand for them is the second page. We could, to your point, we could facilitate, no, we're gonna stone this lot with this driveway, with the required retention, put the retention either at the edge or dig it in and put stone underneath. And that is what we're doing. I think currently, the way that is with Crabtree, Roarball, that could go either way. If we wanted to go bigger, we could do that. I mean, you know, you know, we're on that one this.
Yeah, I thought the idea was.
I think we get to involve, if you get SRS, like.
I mean, we.
And that's an awful lot of money for an object that's probably not gonna cost us a fortune, so.
Probably not a big, it would charge you.
Three daily, probably, probably double that, but yeah, I would still. What, what, what all is involved with renovations? What are we talking about renovations? Is that included, the interior stuff?
Yes. So we just need to create a space for, um, the busing. Um, and we talked about eliminating some of the overcrowded here, um, with some office space and some storage spaces.
That includes what, two bathrooms at the other end of the building?
Sorry, engineer, electrical plumbing for that.
Yes. Atrium. So they would oversee the whole project. Crabtree, I guess.
Now, what we, I guess what we could do is.
I'll prove it, go back and say it better.
Now, this isn't one, this isn't up for approval tonight, so, you know, it's something we can approve.
We'll ask for the breakdown of the estimated construction costs.
I mean, they're already doing a huge project for us, and they're making substantial amount. I would think we should ask for something on this one.
Sixty-nine percent is, especially with the scope of what they're doing already, I agree with you, I'm saying. Are, as a board, do we just wanna reel that in and say, no, you're just doing an acre? And this is what you're going to do? Or do we wanna explore all the options to go bigger out there?
I would say you might want to go bigger because if you're talking about all the buses, and if this park is not over here, now you're talking about the dams prior. If you wanna see the dams and the buses, an acre is kind of small.
It would just be, the way it was originally designed for acres would be just for the buses. Eric, the dams would be parked even in the back here. If you ever take notice and you drive by here during the day, there's probably six cars here, three cars in the back. You know, now there's some meetings or stuff. I think there's plenty of room. An acre's a lot. If you lay it out, you could, you could put a lot of stuff in, true acre. Especially if you did the stormwater already.
Yeah, I think the table will, if we're trying to come back with a breakdown and better press.
And that's what Thomas suggested.
And if we're sure that it stays under whatever township requires it for stormwater management and impervious, impermeable. Nothing is impervious. If it's stone, or a cabin, it is.
That's what they came back outside.
Yes.
It doesn't matter. We thought we were good with the stone.
We thought we could do stone and get away from stormwater. They basically said, no.
No, stone's compacted, it's.
Well, you're stoning it and you're already basically saying you're prepping it for asphalt. Yeah, it's nothing about.
If you would leave it at that lot, different story.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they count stone, that the stormwater won't drain through it. It's impervious.
No, they're counting it as you're getting prepared to pay. Or it, it works, it works.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. It's impervious, the water can't drain through it. They count stone the same as they do asphalt or the roof on the building.
But they will count stone area if it is parked upon, but there is retention underneath. That could be encompassed.
So, just so you recall, when we talked about the high school project and underground retention.
This is just stone, not much pipe.
Basically, they gotta get it down there somehow.
Well, that, that's why, in order for us to stay, so the, so under an acre is all disturbance, not just an acre parking lot. So anywhere we move ground or act is part, has to be under that acre. So we've gotta build a driveway from our driveway to that lot. That's all part of that, under that acre. So that's, so the issue is, for us to stay under an acre, all stormwater has to go underneath. If you put that project in under an acre, you complete it, finish it, sign off, and come back an year later and say it's not big enough. That's a totally separate project that you can move forward to another acre.
They, they.
The engineers, he went like this, I hear nothing, I hear nothing, I hear nothing.
No, they're gonna look at it. They look at a lot size.
No, the township.
How much land you have, how much it drains currently, so how much permeable ground you have.
I'm very familiar with the NPDS requirements, like, yeah.
So there's a percentage typically that if you exceed it, then you have to get into all this underground where it's discharging, storing it before it's discharged. And I think we learned that through the high school project. That's not cheap.
And so part of the other issue is, if we go bigger than, than an acre, um, we get the county involved. But the other piece is, our, we also have to be able to locate a secondary, um, septic, septic system area, which would probably be over here if we're disturbing over there. But they said that would all have to be part of the analysis and the engineering for us to even be able to put it on that side of the building. So that's really where we were trying to limit, because we have enough ground to put a retention basin in. But it's, we're trying to keep under that.
If we keep it to the township level, and I recognize we're, we may have to have a stormwater underneath to do what we need to do. If we keep it to the township level, the process is extremely streamlined. Like, if we said, hey, Crabtree, Roarball, this is what we want to build, engineer it, bid it, we could probably still accomplish that today and have buses parked on it when the start of school. If we begin to get the county involved, we're not even gonna get first review till the time, time of school starts. Now, that's, that's where we, as a board, have to decide what is more valuable. Do we need bigger than an acre? Are we willing to have to bring in, you know, two hundred extra tons of stone to hold that water underneath that lot? Should we park it in the ground? Eric?
What we, what we can do is.
Until that seal's been there forever, it can't get, I would, it need to be solved.
Oh, it'll get solved. Then you're just improving it.
If we have to.
Yeah. And then you're just going to burn that.
So, and right now, the one B is to, if this is not in place, which more than it won't be, is to, is to place them at the buildings as a temporary measure until all the work will be finished.
And I still go back to, as top pocket area school manager, whatever we do here is a wise investment to, to have a place for the buses, you know, for the next fifty years. However, there's decisions and whatnot that have to be talked about. Maybe it'd be best for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to kind of, um, relook at that with Crabtree. Unless you just wanna take it back to Crabtree and say, hey, no, this is what we need. And do we, or do we want to have them specifically split it out, parking area and district office? Because essentially, we're combining stuff that, some of that is for our own good to give people more space, more file storage, stuff like that.
I mean, either way, if that's the price, that's the price. If they break it down or not, it's still gonna be the price. So I'd say if we just approve it, let them work with it and get it done, is my opinion. I mean, this label industry is gonna have to approve whatever you do in this building.
No, naturally do not.
You love some commercial building?
It is not because it's already a school.
I'd still like to get, to give Crabtree a shake and try to give that five percent or something. Also, just to get a scope of, an idea of the cost of each project. Okay, it's a southern acre. How much is that, do they project as the cost? You know, how much, that would project, how much their fees and everything. It's like they're collecting all the numbers, and how much is to be renovated offices, you know, infrastructure budget.
And what, when is that Crabtree coming? Does our CEO Pedro?
So bids, bids come in, um, on the twenty-first, and then we would have a special meeting on the twenty. So we could have them come and present on the twenty-first if you like.
I, I agree with Tom, try to shake them up a little bit of advice. I understand how to put in grounds, I have no trouble doing that. I believe this is gonna be a board issue again, where if three of us ask questions, whether it's three or four questions, it's a lot of people, it's four or eight, it's just gonna come up. So I think we should wait for them to be here and ask them, if we all ask them questions, get the answer at one time. So we can work with this, whatever options we can. That's my.
And is the plan to look at it, what would work now at whatever this is, under an acre? And to also look at it as to what would be ideal, that we're not five years from now talking about reinvesting in engineering fees and all that stuff to do another? To me, it makes sense to look at at least two ways. What's, what gets us by, but also what's ideal for sort of growth, you know?
I said, put stone in the area now, make sure our fence is big enough for whatever we would dream of in the future. Limestone's already. Limestone's already filed, so you grab some stones and grow some growth. That's the perks county.
That works, that works in the form of, that's going to work at the.
At a school district.
At the school. Like a drug it would, but.
It probably won't.
That's a good, that's a realist.
Yeah, I can confirm.
So we'll go back, we'll go back to Crabtree, we'll talk to them about the rate, and we'll talk to them about. Under an acre or under an acre.
I would say, Kyle said it's right, they encouraged us to keep it under the.
They did.
They stressed that a lot. We can get a plan after we go bigger. I agree with you, we don't want to go small. Five years from now, the board's cursing us. What we need to do is write for the district.
All right, move on to the plan, Mr. Lidle.
These are all up for approval, what, twenty-first and twenty-ninth? So.
The current budget, you have a quarter, that's on display out there. Calls for a quarterly decrease in taxes. Boy, if there was any way I could help you out, I would do it, I don't know if I could tell. Just, you know, with, with, you know, inflation and the interest rate environment, with the bond issue, that we're projecting is going to go up another two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars from what we originally had. So, but I have, I have the. Homestead Farmstead.
A year?
What's that?
A year.
Yeah. For a year.
Can you recommend a point one?
Point one will be created as well as, you know, if there's a way I could go over the entire thing with the finance committee ahead of time, ahead of that meeting, that would be okay. To see where we're at, because I'm still getting numbers in. Just going to patch around the Homestead Farmstead. The Homestead Farmstead, this is the tax resolution, this is, these are both based on the the quarterly decrease of twenty-five point seven five mil. You'll notice that the Homestead Farmstead resolution shows that the amount that will be, the exclusion for a Homestead and Farmstead on the back page is two sixty-six eighty-seven. That's up from the two hundred and nine, and it has been for the last fifteen years. Because the state, for the first time in the fourteen year since I once started, changed our allocation from six hundred forty-five thousand to eight hundred one thousand. So they actually came up with more slot money after fourteen years. So, people have Homestead Farmstead instead of two hundred and nine dollars, it'd be two sixty-six. Two sixty-six eighty-seven, that's up to twenty-five point seven five mil. It's roughly the same number, you don't have point one, no, but it's a different exclusion amount. So, yeah, the finance committee, they did assume we can do that. I might go over the.
Do it right before the meeting?
Well, what I really would have is, after the open bid.
Well, I know the bid's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a big part of it.
You said after the bid.
Yeah.
So we could do that.
Want to do it right before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
That's another part of that, you know, how much over here in finance. Would you be able to do that?
Projecting far would not exist.
With the next two million.
Yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
Five thirty, what do you?
Five thirty, so we're at five thirty.
No six thirty.
Everybody's coming on the AM.
They were talking five thirty PM, correct?
Five thirty AM.
We're saying that because the last meeting we had at six thirty AM, he suggested six, and I said, no, what, at least six thirty, so they made it six thirty.
But that works out perfect.
There's a town of this, so, overall comments with comments. As listed, A three.
Yeah, and, you know, I gave you the Homestead Farmstead resolution, taxes, I gave you that resolution. Again, this is just a standard thing, we made general entries all the way through the audits completed, so that's just what I'm writing, has to make those things, those audit entries. And then the commitment of farms, we don't, we don't know how much we're going to commit to each of those plots, but you do know those are going to be the cost of money that we're going to. We'll do that in November after the audit, so how much we have available. But we've talked about all this finance meeting also.
Any other questions or questions?
I hate to agree with Tom, but I don't think we should only do a tax, well, just away.
I second that.
We don't know what cost, I mean, we don't know a lot of costs, even before this.
I guess, why reduce it all? Why not just leave it the same?
That, honestly, that would have been my suggestion too. It pains me to say that, but we're.
Tent or the same, we're basically the same.
We're still reducing taxes.
If you, yeah, ten, a ten feels better, yes.
Yeah, it keeps your purpose.
Yes, exactly, yes.
The treasury records are going to be.
Always a change.
Yeah.
So that would help, that would help.
What is, what is the tenth of the mill?
It's two or turn ten and a half, so it's one five.
One five and a half?
Based off of what you just said, no?
Yeah.
So four point five is two ten, so that would be one five.
Probably eight hundred thousand, so.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So eighty thousand dollars out of what I did.
So you can't raise the property tax or all stuff, huh?
Oh, please.
Yeah. We've, we've.
Oh, you can't raise the property tax.
You can't raise it, but we've. We've been there, done that one. For a long evening. Moving on to personnel, Bill. First, I will, for next meeting, is to prove the healthcare personnel for next year. The following resignations will be due for the next meeting that's listed there. Stop professional salary, stop staff salary adjustments based on the collective bargaining agreement that's listed there. Then tonight, we're going to vote on the rest, I guess the rest of them. Yeah, the rest of them. So I'll make the motion to, for D to approve the bond employment. Philip Forman as an elementary art teacher, a salary of sixty-one, nine, ten, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Philip Lum as a social studies, rural cultures teacher at the junior senior high school, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And Brooke Mahon as speech and language pathologist, a salary of fifty-five, three sixty-three, effective the beginning of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Mark second.
Any comments?
Do we?
Sorry. And I'm still learning this. The step stuff, yes, we, an art teacher makes more than a social studies.
Depends on their experience, so Mr. Forman will be coming in at, this would be his seventh year coming in. Phil would be his first year.
So that's the. That's the B.
Yeah.
Well, the B is bachelor, since they're college. There's lines moving down and lines moving across. So it's based, across is basic education. They have, moving down could be, you know, years of service, it could be.
Is it all part of the contract? Sorry, I asked a question.
No. So, Andy, I'm sorry, I've got a question. Because I've been hearing that we're getting less and less students going into education. Did you have trouble finding teachers? I was just curious.
The speech and language pathologist was extremely difficult. And it went droves, like we would have nobody, and then all of a sudden, we'd have three people out of one shot that we interviewed. We're actually at the point where if somebody applies, for the most part, we either interview them through Spark Hire or we bring them in in person. Life skills is a position we have open at the high school, we have four candidates apply. We have a long-term sub chemistry teacher, we have one person apply. So, social studies, not so much. Elementary art was maybe about twenty. But that might have been a lot.
Elementary teacher, we would get, we need pretty.
Elementary teacher, yeah. But the art teacher was.
It was smaller, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have other positions?
We do. We all, the homeschool visitor, we will have emotional support at the junior high, we'll have life skills, we're reopening that position. We have a school psychologist that hopefully committed today, that we believe we'll be able to have on the agenda for next time. So that's one we checked off. School counselor for a long-term sub, elementary school counselor.
You can have that, because.
Those are all open ones that we are trying to fill right now. And it really is unfortunate, and this is where you'll see, historically, you would see step one B, most of the time, maybe step one M, maybe step two B. But now, you're seeing a lot more steps being offered in years of service given, just because we're all competing in the same pool and people are shifting in districts at this point.
And some of your specialty positions, they cut them as well.
Yes, yeah.
So then you, they get paid higher, because they have this. That's a lot of, like, I know physics is a lot, a lot of really hard.
I get that, I'm just, like, I'm thinking.
That's why the difference.
Like, social studies versus art.
Yeah, that's why the difference is the experience.
Tom will tell you, social studies teachers are nine of a dozen, right? Right through the heart.
Well, he would have been a high school student. He was a fair dude and had a lot of experience, like. I jumped on him.
Making a citizen, Tom.
I used to, I used to, I do the same thing with Rob Schultze, he was a physical education.
Physical education.
Physical education.
What did Bill say was rare, huh?
That's not your primary, though, isn't it? Earth science is your primary.
I would have just said that, if I would have remembered. I would have picked it there for long.
Any other comments? Rule call.
Lidle.
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bets?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Yeah, with it, we approve the transfer of Andrew Pryser from Bethel Elementary Special Education Para-Professional to the junior, to the junior high school administrative assistants, effective June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Mark second.
Any comments? Rule call.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bets?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lidle?
Yes.
F, with it, we approve the transfer of Kylene Sanders to instructional coach for the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school year, to be funded through the Estor Federal Funds. Comments? Rule call.
Heck?
Yes.
Bets?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lidle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Do we need that executive, please? Just in case I raised a question. Does anybody have any questions on the contract? Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve a five-year contract between the Philadelphian Area School District and Tom's calling up chief financial officer as presented. Comments? Rule call.
Bets?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lidle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
See, our unemployment numbers dropped now.
Somebody could have voted no.
So that's for, for you, right?
I'm a master, I hear. Is he going to vote for all your down, right?
And I approve, H, I approve the following summer student workers at the rate of eleven fifteen an hour that was listed. Any comments?
Uh, looks like four, and a substitute, a substitute to graduate, though.
Which is awesome idea, that one.
Yes. Any comments? Rule call.
Coffin?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lidle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bets?
Yes.
I, with it, approve the following substitute Kenny Baldwin, custodian. Any comments? Rule call.
Bets?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Lidle?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck? Clough?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Throw in all the policies, Mr. Heck.
In the first reading, we intend to give second reading and final approval of July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the following policy. And I'm going to say, as.
The, the only policy that I will point out, and it is a, it's, it's our field trip policy. As it was written, as it is written, we've had a fifty mile, anything over fifty miles has had to come before approval. I am recommending, and this is something we can discuss, and it can always be put back in if there's objection, but that we remove that fifty mile requirement, and that it become only out-of-state or overnight required district approval. Everything else would require superintendent approval, correct me, meaning it comes with superintendent permission. But that we would inform the board of all the field trips as they come up. So I don't know the history of that fifty mile. If that's something that just has always been grandfathered in there.
I would think it's a time thing, because of how long it takes to go from back. Try to take a guess.
And, and the policy that PSBA is recommending is that we remove that mile unless we keep our local policy. You know, in looking at it, to go to Philadelphia, to go to Gettysburg, which we go often, would require board approval. Where, you know, to me, that's not necessarily, you know, those aren't that far, are things that we, that I would say need to be board approved. Maybe, you know, informed that we let you know in communication. But if it's overnight, or if it's an extended trip or out of state, I would think you wouldn't want to approve something like that.
And definitely, I think we should always be.
Right.
When you're in a grocery store and it says, what do you take about a lot of, like, oh, I didn't know that's true.
And that's, I think, the first line does say, the board shall be informed of all field trips approved, but it's not.
And then where did I see somewhere about students driving on field trips? That was in one of the pages I read.
So there used to be a policy specifically outlining that, and what they're recommending is that it not be a policy, but instead, just one of our procedures that we put in place.
That you do or do not allow.
That, basically, we would take our current policy and we would allow under certain circumstances. So, offhand, I don't remember. Where it's come up is if, you know, there's a kid that needs to drive for a sporting event because of a job, or there's an event, we've had that. We've had something local where, you know, there was a trip to, you know, FFA or Ag took a trip somewhere, and this student had permission to drive, so they could leave to go to. We would not typically leave a student, right, to Gettysburg by themselves, or, you know, extended. Wow, it's more local in situation. It's more local in situation.
But that doesn't bring upon the, the sports things, because I know that was always an issue of when the meeting, who can, who can not be on the bus and who can go to their parents, and that's completely different.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if we can address, I'm curious why the deletion of the library choose.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Do we want to finish?
Yes.
Is everyone else getting that?
Fee, approve the deletion of the following policies.
Any comments?
So, I was wondering if any could discuss the library choose selection.
Do you remember why one oh nine point one was deleted over one oh nine? I think the two were merged.
Here it's.
Yeah, it, it says, policy, this is for one oh nine, so I believe they get this?
Yes, they do, yeah.
So, it gives a, a justification why it's, so it says, policy language is procedural and better suited to be an administrative regulation. So, one of the things that, um, we do not have in place that we're also trying to put in place with these policies are administrative regulations. So, there's policies, and then how do we carry them? So, the ones that are being deleted will be moved over to administrative regulation. So, basically, policy one oh nine point one will be moved as a procedure that accompanies policy one oh nine, if that makes sense.
Are you making this what policy one oh nine is?
It's, policy one oh nine is, um, resource material.
I just wanted to know if that was interesting, because I talked about months ago with select the materials for our library.
Let me, let me call. Says the board shall, by an affirmative vote of majority of the full board, provide resource materials that implement, support, and enrich the educational program of the district schools. Definition, resource materials shall include nonfiction and fiction books, magazines, reference books, supplementary titles, multimedia and digital materials, software, and instructional materials. Delegation of responsibility. The superintendent shall be responsible for the recommendation of all resource materials. No adoption or change of material shall be made without the superintendent's recommendation except by two-thirds vote of the board. Superintendent or designated shall establish administrative regulations for the selection of resource materials. A list of resource material provided by the district shall be maintained by the superintendent and shall be available to board members, district staff, students, parents, guardians, and community members.
Where are the changes to highlight reports? Are the changes to highlight reports, or?
Yes, the volume.
So, basically, this is giving the, the board the authority.
Say what we have and what we do not.
If I'm understanding that correctly. It, it does, so one oh nine does address, one oh nine point one does address library material selection. So, that's where in policy it does talk about criteria, um, pamphlets, newsletters, you know, et cetera, whatever, publications, weeding, your procedure for weeding through all that, but also, it does say procedures for handling criticism of material. So, what would happen is that policy as it sits would then, an administrative regulation would be developed with that information. So, basically, it's not necessarily, it's no, it would no longer sit as a policy, it would sit as an administrative regulation. Now, that policy can remain as is, um, and what we can do is, um, you know, we won't approve these policies until July officially, so that gives you some time to look at one oh nine point one. I can also get you, um, what one oh nine point one would look like in an administrative regulation as well, so you can see, do we want to put it as a regulation, or do we want to put it as a, you know, remain as a policy? Or do we want to tighten it up? We can do it that way, too.
Are there copies of the deleted policies in there?
Yeah.
I didn't see policies. I didn't see any.
No, the deleted policies are not, and how to get them up to be like?
Please.
Yeah, if we want to compare one oh nine ones.
Do I know what's being deleted?
I'd like to look at one point one point one, too. It's just a suit of driving on field trips, you know. How's, where, where are we with insurance on that? Is that so they can drive? Or we?
It's so they could drive, and we're covering, so the school's covering the insurance if there's an accident while the child's driving. Now, it would fall on the student's insurance.
Yeah. Requires the parent permission twenty-four hours, at least twenty-four hours before the parent can sign off on the same thing that every other.
Any other comments? All right, we've seen none, we're going to move on to curriculum as possible.
Approve the agreement with Hamburg area school district for students to attend top audit school district ag program, and approve the Valley area school district for students to attend ag program the next school year, and then we have a flexible instructional day application.
Um, the flexible, the flexible instructional is just that ability, every year we have to apply if we want to be able to have the opportunity to use virtual days. The state allows you to use five virtual days. This year, I believe, we used one when PB closed. We had icy weather that looked like we were going to close, um, and so we utilized a virtual day to kind of trial run things, as well as try to sacrifice or to salvage a day, um, where PB would have been closed anyway because of the water main breakages. So, um, the application is good for two years. We've submitted it. Ours needs to be re-submitted in order to move forward for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, and you should have that application as well. Within there, it just tells you how you're going to address internet access. We do allow hotspots available, how you're going to, uh, address students that do not have access. It talks about the need to, uh, give extended time on assignments, how you're going to address learning, if you know things in advance, how you can address it, um, and then they ask for examples of what lessons could be, and those lessons are in there as well in your packet. Take care of my, your action, please.
Approve the twenty-two, twenty-three junior senior high school ATS high plan as presented and approve the special education comprehensive plan as presented at the five-three, twenty-two
Any questions or anything? Mr. Lionel, you want to take care of technology?
Sure.
Technology, a staff laptop replacement, annual cycle, Mr. Shirk?
Uh, I believe you have the quotes already. There are two, uh, one for Apple, Apple Airs, and the other for Dell Attitude. It's just our staff cycle replacement for our teachers. So, that just kind of adds up, it's eleven Macs and eighteen Dells this year. Do you want to recommit? All right, just going to go right into it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the iPad community sale proposal.
Um, so last board meeting, we talked about reselling our iPads, uh, and you asked about us doing it rather than recycling it for the community, um, so I believe you have this form as well, flyer. So, we looked at doing a community buyback for our iPads. So, what the tech department would do is we grab our iPads, validate them, wipe them, get them ready, and then we would have a form online where a community member could sign up to come in and time slot and come buy up to two iPads per family. So, the form would limit that by the address, we would do all that, and then click months before that, uh, eighty-dollar donation for the iPad. With that, it's a matter of us owning all the iPads and then having the community members sign, sign up in time slots. So, we do have, most of our iPads will get burned, those tomorrow, so we are ready to get working on that with board approval. Any questions on that?
I think this is a great, uh, community sale. I like that for just a community, I don't know, though, um, I've enjoyed my kids turning back to the iPads. Who says summer they don't have them, I prefer to use it, turn back your phone for old ones. Just, just saying.
Is that, so, we want to, um, vote on to keep, allow you keep moving on it?
I, I'm going to be working the iPad regardless, so.
Okay, okay. So, it'll only be notified by message?
Um, I'm going to, with board approval after phone call out, email, enter through our normal system, and I will put that out after the board meeting, and then we'll have to probably sign up either at the end of junior or early July.
Does, does the donation go back into?
It'll go into the technology fund to recycle free iPads. Same, same way as iPads, we would recycle if we were doing it for something.
Uh, somebody called me and said they tried to do that website or whatever, and it took them to Google Documents, whatever Google Drive, so they logged into that, and then it said that, uh, for lack of a better term, they didn't have permission.
We didn't share it out yet, so they wouldn't have had access to it. Yeah, we had the link there for our purposes, but we didn't share it out publicly yet.
Where was the link?
It's on the flyer that you have.
In our emails.
Yeah.
Oh, to our board emails.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
The, the one, um, and I know there's a couple comments, and this is linked to kind of the iPads and the technology. I know there's a lot of paper that is being given, um, and I think one of the, and Chris may have mentioned it at the one board meeting, about is there a way that we can have the resources electronically in front of us? One of the things that we could do is we could hold back either nine laptops from recycling or nine iPads from being sold and provide them to each of you to be able to get those resources electronically, your email could be put on there, um, you can bring them with you to the board, or we could have it pre-set up with everything loaded so that it's electronic and available as opposed to the paper, if that's something, or if some of you would rather have the laptop, the iPad, we can do a combination of paper and laptop, uh, or iPad. I think I know where Bill is, but. And all of the rest of you.
I mean, I'd be a hundred percent honest to have this much paper printed times nine for something we can look at electronically. That's, that's a lot. You know, I think if we wanted it printed, it would sound.
That would just die.
I mean, that's, that's one of, that's probably like three rings of paper.
It probably is.
Between all the board members, that's probably three rings of paper.
I think, I think that's a poor five rings of paper.
I mean, I know Matt quickly pulls it up on his iPad, and we can easily, what we could do is we could have iPads loaded in front of you, and you could easily be able to pull up that stuff on an iPad, or if you were more, you know, you could be a combination iPad, laptop, depending on what you're more comfortable with.
I don't mind, I don't mind the hard copy for some of the smaller stuff, but we get into policies, and I mean, this is definitely.
It's easy to go back and look at email, and sometimes you get emails, so if you're thinking, I don't believe that, you know, it seems easier to go on and look at it.
And if, if there are things like, um, see, if we have those hard copies, just let me know that I'm not providing for you. I mean, I realize there are things that are easier to see in front of you than.
Oftentimes, when we get our board notes, I print stuff out just so I could sit there and do the reading, I don't necessarily, you know, print everything. So, what's our consensus? What do we want? Can we, somebody would make a motion? I think we just need a consensus of what.
Just tell me what you want.
Just give us something that's easy to use. I don't care what it is.
The iPad's probably the easiest. Yes, because we can actually load the files right on the iPad, and we can just click on it.
We could sell laptops, too.
Um, not this year, but we, we discussed that next year. So, we give our seniors back, back to them every year. This year was the first year we getting eighth grade back. I did not bring up to sell those because, um, we don't really need them for parts. Oh, quite honest. We're having a lot of times, for hard time sourcing parts right now, so I was actually really happy to keep those eighth grade ones.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we just, if we want it in paper, you know, we just need to ask, because sometimes comparing things, it, it's easier for me to have on paper, I can say, oh, yeah, this is here, or it's like, you know, um, like when we do textbooks and stuff like that, I like having paper because I, I have reference, you know, it, it's quicker to flip for me, but, yeah, this is like, yeah, I feel very bad.
Would we have the ability to print from the iPad if we want to print something else to look at it? Could we get that stuff?
All right. Finally getting somewhere on this agenda. Down to administrative reports, and we're just going to go in the order that are here. Mrs. Danny Act.
All right, so I just closed out my third year as principal, and every year I've done it differently, and I'm happy to say this is my favorite year. Got to experience field day for the first time. Um, we had a sixth grade graduation inside of the school, which was really nice to see. And then we had a volleyball game where Dr. Netsnik came and showed off his volleyball skills.
I blew it the first two shots. I said it's sailing.
But it was a lot of fun, and it was really nice to see those things, um, come back after a four-year hiatus. Something else I thought I was worth sharing, um, I also changed how, um, par, par professionals are evaluated. In the past, sometimes special ed, had done special ed paras, but this time, um, at least I'm not sure how high school did, but elementary did all of them. And then, in addition, we held meetings where, um, like the K-slow would meet together, so it'd be the life skills teacher and then life skills paras. And we talked through, like, what are some things that were, that from your perspective went really well this year, and then what's something that we could do better. They just think, they have a really great advantage, um, and viewpoint that they get to this school in a different way than really anybody else in the school does, so they have a lot to offer, um, feedback. So, um, that was very well received, but also gave me a lot of insight and information that I think I've been out processing through the summer and just opened up for, even best yet. And then last thing, I've talked a lot about some of the things I do for staff, um, just for like culture morale boosters, so I always try and share something, um, sometimes serious and sometimes not so much about myself, so I, in kind of like a light, very funny kind of way, shared that I have a fear of alligators, I think they're creepy. And I actually do have batteries sometimes of alligators, it's really weird, but they're creepy and they're beasts. Anyway, um, so I linked it though as a way to be like semi-motivational and not really a complete crazy person. Linked it to how, um, sometimes we have to face our fears, and sometimes the only thing in the way of us accomplishing a goal is fear, and we just need to just kind of get over it and face it and accomplish what we want. So, I gave them the summer challenge where every staff member has a little mini alligator, and they are tasked with taking their alligator on an adventure and sending me a picture. So, the idea is that when I opened up the faculty meeting in the fall, we can see all the things that the staff has done over the summer, but it also helps me seem a little connected to them because they text me a picture, which I've already gotten some already, and it's a nice way for me to kind of have that conversation, like, oh, it's really great, you know, tell me that, whatever, so.
This also concludes my third year with the district. Some activities that were happening at the end of the school year, um, we had our authors tea for our first grade students, where we invited, um, parents, community members in to see our first graders who took a story that they wrote, illustrated, and then went through the publishing process with their teacher. We also had a poetry cafe with Dr. Netsnik, and Dennis also came to that. We had our sixth grade graduation outside, it was a beautiful day. Mr. Baz was there celebrating his, moving on to the junior senior. celebrating, is moving on to the junior, senior high. Professional development already began today at Bethel Elementary. We had a number of teachers come in for safety care training, had some technology training with our teachers, and next week, we have our camp convention program that will be run from Bethel, which is still under scholarship provided by the board. We have over 160 kids that are coming to that, a great deal of them are taking advantage of that scholarship, and our PTO also sponsored two additional students to give them the opportunity to come this summer.
Good evening, everyone. We had a great wrap up to the end of the year, we had our backglow, which was well attended, we had our graduation, which we had about perfect weather for, which was also well attended. This past weekend, we had the 5K run for Rachel Cox, who passed away this year, and I just wanted to make a comment and really appreciate Brady Royce who organized the environment and with the help of the school and Mr. Johnson. There was hundreds of people there supporting the family, coming out to the Top Hocken Community, and all the families were there to help the Cox family and support her and support what they're trying to do. Also, the, there was a raffle at the Cox event, which was able to raise some funds for a scholarship as well for Rachel's family, so really good stuff and really impressive to see the top on the end. Thank you.
So I have a couple things to report for the junior high. I know I've only been here for a couple months, but it's been an absolute honor and privilege, and I'm very much looking forward to starting, you know, working this summer and getting fresh for my first full year onboard at the junior, senior high. One of two things, last Friday, the junior high held an award ceremony for all seventh and eighth graders, and we had an open invite for all families who were available to come, join us for that award ceremony and the multimedia presentation, that some senior, one of the seniors helped as a senior project, and then afterwards, we had some time to, you know, kind of talk and get to know each other in cafeteria, or like a picnic with refreshments afterwards. I got to experience my first Top Hocken graduation, it was wonderful, like Mr. Hammer said, the weather was fantastic. And finally, the junior high held Field Day, so I was able to experience my first Top Hocken junior high Field Day, and they wrapped up the year, they raised, the junior high raised over the $1,000, they were looking to raise before diamonds, which meant that in front of the end Field Day and then entire, in front of the entire junior high in Coral Suite, I had to do a dance and make a fool of myself, which I was happy to do, since it was such, it was such a great course.
What Mr. Lynch left out was he experienced his first Tractor Day. What did you think of that?
It was awesome.
It was awesome, and it's just a great, I just have so much pride in that day, I really do. Next to the milkshakes and stuff, and that's all nice to have by the way it ran out, but we had a food truck there, it's just, just a great sense of pride, I loved that day. Prom was May 14th, I want to thank the Snyder family on the last spread, they let us use their venue, it is beautiful, and gang, they didn't charge us a dime. Mark Snyder Jr. said it's just because of Toby pride, so kudos to him. Just a little bit about graduation, I missed graduation, first time in 20 years, and this isn't a knock on the graduation I was at, but we did it right, we do it right, and I watched the graduation when I got home from my son's graduation, and like I said, it's not a bust over where I was at, but it was a very great, nice event, and something we should be proud of.
P V Gym Aseum started today with the bleacher removal, taking up, up to a couple of items out of there. We're gonna prep some walls, Kyle and I, for paint, that'll start next weekend, what, excuse me, this week, and that'll last for a couple weeks, and for the last couple, so it's a routine schedule there. At Bethel, we had a program, I think Dr. Netsmith originally gave me that name, it's the Burks County School of County Master Watership Stewart Council, they did some planner boxes at Bethel, two of them there, we had one going in, Penn Burnwell, I think that's 14, 15, we still try to settle on that date, they'll be coming in, I have some pictures, once they're all completed, we can show, we can show you guys, so we're pretty, I'll be honest, when the hurricane didn't have any money, but I was pretty impressed with how they started, so. And finally, I want to thank Dr. Netsmith for the work he gave for my guys, Paul, we see the 25 a year, and for super attending, more of excellence. Paul's been here 25 years, and he's been here a lot longer than that, but working for 25 years, and Kyle and I really, Kyle and I pretty much started the stand-up, Kyle and I really enjoyed working, had enjoyed working with Paul, he's guaranteed he's gonna be here, so makes me happy, so.
As they stated wrapping up the end of the year, we had backglow and graduation. If you did miss those, they're on YouTube, feel free to peruse, get the views up. Technology, we wrapped up, collecting devices went really, really well this year, it was actually pleasantly surprised, a lot of the kids were in really good shape, so that made me happy, not a lot to fix. We started at Bethel today, started to get stuff ready to move up, get rid of the high school and iPad refresh and stuff like that. Most of our devices did come in from the order, we have a shipment issue with Dell that I'm working through, but all of our iPads are here for next year already, so we're getting ready for that as well. Sorry, thank you.
I'm Taylor Tuck here, but I just want to formally introduce myself, I'm Caitlin Bryce, today is officially my first day as admin, as coordinator and special education. Today, I started my first day as admin teaching safety care, and I'll be doing that again for P V tomorrow, I'm our, one of our district's safety care trainers. Couple things with Special Ed is that our special education comp plan is complete, and we'll be ready for approval on 21st, we have the public review and the pre-approval from P V E advisor, and as Dr. Netsmith said earlier, we had interviews for our flight physician and found a candidate that hopefully will be board approved soon.
I just closed out my second day, but to be honest with you, in a lot of ways, it feels like I never left, it's been kind of nice leading the district, entering COVID, but then coming in, you know, post-COVID and getting to meet a lot of this phenomenal team that's been built in the last three years, I'm just itching to get started and look for ways to contribute, to serve the district, so really excited to be here again, I'm getting to meet the admin team this week, and yesterday was just the breath of fresh air, you know, it was all about celebrating, you know, the staff that we have, celebrating, you know, coming together at the end of the year, and that doesn't happen everywhere. So I think, a lot of teachers spoke yesterday, Trevor Brown spoke on behalf of the secondary teachers, and it's a great day to be a Trojan, and it's so easy for people that when you're so close to something to lose appreciation for what it is, to step it away for three years, and then being able to realize what is here, and being able to come back and have this opportunity to stay, so looking forward to working with everybody again, and it's gonna be great.
And Mrs. Danny Adams, please don't beep, I have a picture to show you then.
Oh, no, don't you give her more than a damn.
Region of Cajun Bayou Tours in Louisiana, it's a great place.
They keep it up on my TikTok feed, they like torment me, I'm like, "What?"
That's your problem. Does anybody have any old business to discuss? Any new business to discuss? I'd just like to thank all the administrators for all the hard work this year, I know we give you a hard con, but we really appreciate what you do for us and our kids, and keep up the good work, and thank you. To echo what they said about graduation, personally, I was dreading my role at graduation, but I'll tell you what, it was one of the most rewarding things I ever got to do, as far as anything in this education, but yeah, it was fun, just really neat to see kids and be able to feel their anxiousness and excitement, yeah.
If I could just, sometimes, I have to tell you, I am pumped about our team as we move forward in the new year. Sometimes I come up with ideas, they come out of my mouth, and then I process them and realize what the impact of it is, but this morning, starting at about 4:30 this morning, the team started to assemble breakfast this morning for the staff, so I guess two weeks ago, I said to them, "Wouldn't it be cool if we could kick off summer break for our staff with us cooking breakfast for everybody?" And then we reality it, we actually had to plan this, and Jill was in trail and getting everything for us and helping us, and Chris was first on the scene setting up, but by quarter or six, everybody was assembled and getting things ready, and it was pretty neat to see our leadership team, you know, serving everybody this morning and kind of starting somewhere off on a positive. And the other thing is, another crazy idea, several years ago, we have, we have a Toby Pack program that we created where we give food packs to families on every other Friday. We did try a summer one year where we offered it to families, and we had a very slow or very low number asking for those, and the team gathered together, there's a group of pastors, Salvation Army, the administrators, we meet on a monthly basis, and we said, "Hey, how about we do it again?" And I said to the team, "Hey, how about we actually deliver these packs? How bad could it be?" So we put the request out there, we have 160 families that are requesting this year for food, and so we have to start putting that plan together of how we're gonna pack it, how we're going to, it's all funded through the Burks County Community Foundation, has gotten the Curr scholarships, this Curr money, has allocated money over the last several years to pay for that, Salvation Army with my wife helps lead that and bring some of that together, local churches and pastors have helped, so we've got to figure out the dynamics and the, of how we're going to deliver those packs, but I think it's, it's kind of cool that, you know, we'll be out in the community partnering with, you know, some of our churches as well, to get and meet some of those needs of our community, so, you know, it's awesome that when people say Top Hocken's small, I think it was Rita Borri yesterday said that Top Hocken may be small, but it's mighty, and certainly that is true and rings loud, so I do want to thank the team for the ideas that they've signed on for and many more.
So while I'm here, does that 5:30 morning P V E drop day? Just now on a board night. Might as well just do it by next morning. It's true, we should just stay right into it, start cooking out. Anything else from anybody? We will be having an executive session for personnel items, looking for a motion to go there. Oh, yeah. Does anybody have a public comment or add? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.